All right, welcome everyone to the September 11 Select Board Meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
We're holding progress.
To the Republicans.
The Republicans. The Republicans. The Republicans. The Republicans. The lead justice for all.
I'm just going to ask the select board members to introduce themselves. We have four.
I'm Craig Barger.
Sorry, we need a minute. No.
Oh, Jamie's not.
No, not today.
We just had a couple of battles against the lobby.
Number one.
Okay, so tonight, before we get started with our regular meeting, I just wanted to acknowledge that today is the anniversary of the September 11th event. I wanted to take a moment aside. Thank you. And thank you to our public safety officials for having a very small ceremony this morning to commemorate that, remembering that every year and select members that were able to attend. So our first item on the agenda is planning and zoning board appointments. We have three applicants and two seats. The term expirations for the two seats are June 30th, 2027, and June 30th, 2028. And we are going to have, let me see, it's Jeanine. I'll see if you are, Jeanine. I'll have you go first if you want to come up.
And what I, to what did, what did I do to get this honor? Thank you, thank you very much.
So Jeanine, if you'll sit down, we have a packed agenda tonight, so I don't mean to rush you, but I'm going to ask you so much.
No, of course.
Very briefly, just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you are interested in serving on the planning board.
Thank you very much, and good evening. I, this is my second shot at this. I think last time I came, I think there was an opening when there wasn't, but it's still interesting to see the board at work. I've worked for several years as a town of balance zoning enforcement officer. It's been some time, 1996, but that was in '6. And I've worked as a zoning enforcement, excuse me, a zoning lawyer or landlord, a lawyer at the Town of Balance. So I've seen both sides of boards. I've been both in part in part of presenting as an attorney. I've also been in part of boards representing the towns position in some of these, in some of these more hotly discussed issues, zoning planning, historical districts commission, conservation commission, and planning board. So I think I've seen both sides. As a zoning enforcement officer, I did work for the building commissioner. And I think that what I do bring to this is, you know, a sense that we have to have an interface between the bylaws that are going to tell us what I can do and the contrast with many of us who are property owners who feel that my home is my castle. I make a decision about what I do and try to then, you know, in a, in a, in an educational way, really show how we can find, we can offer some relief. We still have to enforce what is what the town. So I think it's trying to find that balance because I've come on both sides of, both sides of the dial, as we say. Bring it back to it. I've lived in the town now almost 10 years and would really like to not just participate, not just for something.
I would like to contribute if I could. So I appreciate the opportunity. I would say that the only difference between now and when I last applied was pre-COVID is that I am now, instead of working full-time as an attorney for the Department of Veterans Affairs, I've cut down to three days. That's a lot, but it's three days a week is what I get paid to do, but more work time. So I have some time, thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Any questions from the board?
Thank you.
No questions, thank you.
And our next candidate, Mickey Wolf. Nice to see you tonight. I thought, I was planning that you weren't going to be able to make it, so I'm glad you were able to come.
Thank you.
If you just want to introduce yourself and, like I said before, just briefly tell us about your interest and why you'd like to serve on the planning board.
Sure, my name's Mickey Wolf. I have lived in Easton for almost 10 years. I'm currently the library director for Morse Institute Library in Natick. Just like I didn't think I was going to be here tonight. Had a budget presentation, managed to get it all through in plenty of time. Part of this experience, I've worked on both sides. I know what it's like to be able to work in the town and have folks who want to volunteer, who want to kind of serve and help the town. I've been an alternate member of the planning board for about three months now. I've very much enjoyed my time there. I've been kind of sitting back and making sure that it's the appropriate board for me before requesting to be moved to a former, and I feel confident that now is the time. I'm ready to serve.
Okay, great, thank you. Any comments or questions from the board?
No.
All right, thanks Mickey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And do we have the other candidate on Zoom?
We do. I think we may, we have some broadcast issues with ECAT that they're working on, but we should be able to get Joanne in here. There we go.
Hello, Joanne.
Good evening.
We can't hear you. Are you on mute or are we? Try it again, it might be us.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, you can. This is one of our first nights trying out the hybrid, so you're, you're our test case. So if you just want to.
I can't see you guys.
Okay, that's all right. Just listen to our, our voices will guide you along. If you want to just introduce yourself and tell us very briefly why you're interested in serving on the planning and zoning board.
Sure, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. My name is Joanne Ziggman. I have been an Easton resident for just over a year now. I moved here because of the great quality of life, the open space, the good school system, you know, everything that everybody loves about Easton. I am very interested in joining the planning board, partly because my day job is actually as an urban planner. So I work for Old Colony Planning Council, the regional planning agency that serves 17 communities in the greater Plymouth and Brockton areas. So I have a broad experience with regard to different urban planning issues, be that open space planning, all the way through to working on affordable housing strategies for towns. In fact, I worked at the Town of Easton on their affordable housing action plan. I also worked at the Town of Easton on the age-friendly action plan. I'm currently working with other communities in our region on master plans, as well as open space and recreation plans, and even a park master plan. So I think my experience as a professional urban planner will be of benefit to the planning board and especially my ability to bring a little bit of a different perspective from what other communities are doing as well, too. Because I do stay on top of, you know, the latest trends, the latest learnings, things like that from the planning field. I used to be on the conservation commission in my previous community, so I do have experience as a commissioner board member on the municipal side as a volunteer. That was a really great experience. I particularly am a firm believer in public engagement when it comes to planning decisions made in communities. People who live here, you know, invest in the community and they trust, they trust their children to the school systems. They enjoy the parks, and so I think public participation is very important in all that we do. So I hope to bring that perspective as well to the planning board. I know that there are a lot of issues over the next several years that communities are going to be challenged with. And I feel like I've got the skills and the experience to help navigate that process. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
I have none.
All right, we can deliberate. Does anybody have any suggestions on going first?
It's a very difficult decision. We have three very qualified people. Ms. Wolf has already been serving on the board for some time, so I'm comfortable with my, with where I am at. I don't know about you guys.
I would also agree with that, that she should continue, from my opinion, based on what she's put in the time already. I know she has already contributed through work on the historical commission as well. And I like the municipal experience and background. The large library is also an appealing asset, I think, too.
I concur.
Well, that's, it's usually the case when somebody has already put in some time to serve on a board, we'd like to see the alternates move up to the, to the permanent roles and then that frees up a new position. So I agree, and if somebody would like to make a motion to appoint Mickey to, let me see, we've got two time periods here.
June of '28.
June of, would you prefer '28 or '27, Mickey?
I'll take '28.
Okay, to June 30th, 2028. If somebody would like to make a motion?
I have one.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mickey Wolf to planning and zoning through June 30th, 2028.
Seven.
So that's Lamb and Barger, and this will be a roll call vote.
Stacy Wolf.
Lamb Wolf.
Full Janetti Wolf.
Barger Wolf.
Excellent. And then the other term expires June 30th, 2027. I've worked with Joanne before and I know that she's worked on different plans in the town. She has, does have a broad experience and a real familiarity with Easton, so that is something that would be meaningful to me. Any other board member comments?
It's a difficult decision to make, but I would, I would concur that Joanne feels to me as a member of the planning board.
Agreed.
Yes.
All right, would somebody like to make a motion?
I have to.
Motion for Joanne Ziggman for the June 30th, 2027 expiration appointments to the planning and zoning board. Did I do that right?
So that's Stacy and Barger in a roll call vote.
Stacy Ziggman.
Lamb Ziggman.
Full Janetti Ziggman.
Barger Ziggman.
So Jeanine, I just wanted to, I've met with Jeanine before. We had coffee and I love her experience. I think there's some things that might be coming up that you might be interested in, and I'll reach out to you when, when those become available.
Appreciate it, thank you very much.
And we appreciate you being here tonight.
And thank you to all the candidates for putting in the time and volunteering.
All right, all right. Next, we have announcements. So a reminder of the Public Safety and Public Works Facility Replacement Project, key public engagement dates and voter decision dates. Connor, do you want to run through those?
Sure, thank you, Dottie. So we have a more comprehensive presentation tonight at 6:45. We've talked about this project for quite some time overboard, but just want to make sure that we take every opportunity we get to remind folks of key dates for them to get involved. We will have a first of two facilities tours at Public Works on Center Street, 130 Center Street at 6:30 PM this Thursday. And we'll have a second tour of our facilities at Police Fire on Lothrip Street at 6:30 on Monday, October 2nd. Those are in advance of a planned October 23rd special town meeting at 7:00 PM at the Alverims High School and an anticipated dead exclusion election on November 4th from 10:00 to 4:00 at the Alverims High School. There is a project website featured on our agenda. It's, you get a pop-up as soon as you come to the town website, but it's eastonpsw.com. That is all the key dates, all the project reports, project history, that type of thing for folks to get up to speed. If they haven't engaged on it yet, get in touch with us with any questions or concerns.
And we did just send out postcards, so people should have.
Every home in Easton.
Have learned a little bit about it by now. And, you know, on that project website, there's a lot of great information. There's a frequently asked questions page, so anything that you possibly think of is pretty much on there, and if we haven't thought of it, reach out. There's an email that you can send us a question and we'll get those answers out there or added to the frequently asked questions. So I think the website came out great and I know that we're tweaking it as we go along based on the kinds of questions that we have. We want to make sure that people can find the information and there'll be a social media page.
I guess there is. I don't know the URL off the top of my head, I apologize, but we'll be sharing that to the town's social media platforms that we already have quite a following on. We'll be including it in weekly newsletters through the Town Crier. Something we've talked about a lot is that it's been a real loss. We don't have the Eastern Journal and a local paper, so we're aware that not everyone wants to consume their information online or can. And so we also, you know, we're available here. Anyone wants to stop by our office, we can make hard copies of anything they would like for anything related to this project. They could call our office, we'll mail them materials. So any way that we can get that information out, we're happy to help people.
All right, terrific. Any questions, comments?
We had a community meeting last evening at the temple and it was very well-attended and there were some very, very good questions that came as a result of it. So I'm appreciative of the people who decided to come.
Excellent, all right, terrific. All right, next we have licenses and permits. The first one is a request to amend a road closure approval for the Eastern Shovel Town Cultural District's End of Summer Music Series Festival. The time was extended a little bit to 4:30. So it's now, now, we've asked for the road closure for 10:30 to 4:30, but the festival is 10 to 4:00. So there's a half hour on each end to get things cleaned up, and that is this Sunday, September 17th. The cultural district is sponsoring that. We have five awesome bands. They, they have had exceptional audiences all summer, so we've brought most of them back again. And we have Shovel Town Brewery, we have food trucks, other food vendors, The Farmer's Daughter is going to be there. I don't have the list in front of me and I probably shouldn't have called out specific names without remembering all of them, but please come. It's going to be an awesome day and it's a family-friendly event. And the art gallery is also going to be open, so people can kind of tour down for the arts and music festival. So that is my little sales pitch on that. And the vote again is just to extend the time from 10:30 to 4:30.
Shall I move Barger?
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb, and all in favor? Unanimous, okay. Next, we have Old Colony YMCA Donor Appreciation Event. It's a private event on 50 Oliver Street, October 3rd from 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM. And Frank is here for that. Frank, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
No, so that's a once-a-year event, I'm sorry. That's a once-a-year event that the Old Colony Y has for their donors. It's, it's a private event and they invite their donors to participate in that.
Okay, so that is from, on October 3rd from 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM. And an Eastern Police Detail is not required. So would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for the Old Colony YMCA Donor Appreciation Event at 50 Oliver Street, October 3rd, 2023, 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM.
Shall I move Barger?
That's Lamb and Barger, all in favor? Unanimous. Okay, next we have Flynn Farm, their Farm Fall Festival at 42 Bay Road on October 7th, 2023, 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And Sean Flynn of Flynn Farm and Frank Alteria, Alteri, and Jessica Flynn.
Jessica, Sean is not here.
Jessica is great stand-in. Have applied for a one-day beer and wine license for the Flynn Farm Fall Festival to be held at 192 Bay Road on Saturday, October 7th from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM. It's not in the packet, but we'd like to add a rain date of October 8th to the, to the motion when we go through that, so.
Yes, please.
Thanks for being here tonight, Jessica. Tell us a little bit about the event.
It's same as last year. It's our second annual, basically family-friendly event. A lot of food trucks, Frank will be there, Shovel Town, animals, hayrides, you know, regular fall activities. So we had a really good turnout last year, so we're hoping for the same this year to keep going.
That's great.
Yep.
Any comments or questions?
No, have a great time.
So people just think, you know, there's no tickets or anything like that?
Different things, like the hayride is a certain amount of money and stuff, but there's no like entry fee to come in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Excellent. All right, if somebody would like to make a motion?
I move to Flynn Farm Farm Fall Festival, 492 Bay Road, October 7th, 2023, from 11:00 to 6:00, with a rain date of October 8th.
Second, Lamb.
That's Barger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck for the event.
Thank you.
And the Friends of Borderland Murder Mystery Dinner, 259 Massapaw Gav, October 14th, 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. We have Jenny Murray here to tell us a little bit about the Friends of Borderland. They have applied for a one-day beer and wine license for the murder mystery dinner. And it's a great opportunity to see the Ames Mansion at 24, 259 Massapaw Gav. The event is scheduled for Saturday, October 14th from 6:00 to 9:00, and an Eastern Police Detail is not required. So come on up, Jenny.
Hi. So we are really looking forward to this event. It's called Murder at the Devonshire Manor. And something bad is going to happen. And, but it's, we are, we plan to sell 80 tickets at $100 each. Only people 21 years of age and up can attend. There will be beer and wine served and, let's see, there will also be food. And this is the first time we've been able to do this since the pandemic, so we're really excited about it. It's, the premise is that the Devonshire family had this beautiful architecturally well-known home that had fallen into disrepair. And so the mayor of the town of Pinehorn wanted to have a fundraiser and some people said not to because they thought the place was haunted and all that. That's kind of a fun premise. So the mayor did go ahead with the plan and, and held a fundraiser, but then something is going to happen at it. It's from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. There will be a police officer present, of course, and park rangers and, and all of that. And I don't know, we have everything, I think, in line if we can get the permit approved.
So how do people get tickets?
Part, I'm sorry, what?
How do people get tickets?
Oh, how do they get tickets? It will be available on the website shortly.
Okay.
We didn't want to put the cart before the horse.
Sure, and what is the website?
Oh, friendsofborderland.com.
Easy to remember.
I think it might be, is it .org or .com?
Oh, that's a good question. Connor, can you help me out?
People, people who are.
I'm filling in tonight, I should know this.
People who are looking for this can Google Friends of Borderland.
Thank you.
Sean's going to beat me.
.org, of course.
You'll never forget that now.
Thank you.
Well, there's a lot of great events that are, that are held there and if there's only 80 tickets, people should act fast. It's a beautiful venue and historic building and just sounds like a really great event, so. If there's no comments or questions, if somebody would like to make a motion?
Oh, I make a motion to approve a one-day liquor license for the Friends of Borderland Murder Mystery Dinner, 259 Massapaw Avenue, on October 14th from 6:00 to 9:00 PM.
Second, Barger.
So that's Stacy and Barger, and all in favor? Unanimous, excellent.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with the event.
Thank you. Dottie, I don't think you did Stonehill, the very first one.
Did I miss Stonehill?
Yeah.
Oh, I did miss Stonehill, thank you, goodbye. All right, and the, the one that I missed, Stonehill College 75th Anniversary Celebration, 320 Washington Street, September 29th, 2023, 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM. Stonehill has applied for a one-day beer and wine license for their 75th Anniversary Celebration to be held on the Duffy Lawn at 320 Washington Street on Friday, September 29th, from 4:00 to 11:00. An Eastern Police Detail is not required. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I move to point, excuse me, prove a Stonehill College 75th Anniversary Celebration, 320 Washington Street, September 29th, 2023, 4:00 to 11:00 PM.
Second, Lamb.
So that's Barger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Frank, would you like to make a comment on the 75th Anniversary Special?
I thought it would be shameless, but I will, I will talk to that. For those of you who are interested, we did do a special 75th Anniversary Beer for Stonehill. It's a really cool label and it's, it's a special beer for them for this anniversary celebration. We've also been supporting their football games and that beer is available at the football games. The beer is available at the brewery, both Shovel Town and Station One in Foxborough, and at local package stores, so it's at Pops and Shovel Shop Liquors. And that's an exclusive beer for Stonehill. And we love doing those kind of specialty beers. It's really great to be a part of the community and, and have the community recognize the value of doing that.
Thank you.
Fantastic, thank you.
So how cool is that, that we have our own brewery in our own town that, that can do something like that? So I just thought that was the coolest one I saw at Frank. So thank you for, for speaking unprompted. Okay, what time are we at, 6:25? So we're doing well here. Next, we have a discussion and vote on contract, PCD 2024-01 Barrett Planning Group LLC for the MBTA Community Zoning Economic Feasibility Study and Public Education and Outreach. Wayne, are you going to speak to that?
Yes, ma'am.
Come on up.
Thank you very much. Thank you, I'm Wayne Butler, community planner at the planning department. I support a variety of boards and commissions, including the planning board and Stephanie. And I don't want to get into too much detail about the MBTA communities initiative. I know you have a very packed agenda tonight. The town is working on putting in some zoning language to comply with the MBT community requirements of the state, looking at three different areas. As you remember, the select board appointed a task force about two years ago to identify potential areas and come up with a set of principles that they would like the town to pursue going forward. One of them being maximum affordability, because as we know, the housing crisis is real and Easton is increasingly unaffordable for middle-class and working-class families, and that has an impact on the ability to staff, public safety, the schools, ability for employers to provide employees. The state has put out guidelines so that you cannot have more than 10% of your units required to be affordable in your MBTA zoning. And this is to make sure that it is economically feasible to develop multi-families. However, you can increase the percentage of units or decrease the affordability below the 80% area median income if you have an economic feasibility analysis that the state accepts that justifies increasing the affordability and shows that it is still economically feasible for developers to build. The town applied for and received $45,000 community planning grant from the state and we did an RFP process and proposed contracting with the lead contractor being Barrett Planning Group to help with public education outreach for the center, hopefully for public meetings. The first one being October 11th. The planning board is looking to open the public hearing process on October 2nd. And also, the larger part of the contract would be this economic feasibility analysis, increasing the number of units up to the maximum of 20%, if at all possible, maybe only 15. And also increasing the affordability beyond the 80% AMI, perhaps down to as low as 50%. Again, this is a contingent on the analysis, but it's in keeping with the implementation of UT task forces guidelines to get as much affordability as possible. So we've got a contract before you tonight and have to answer the questions.
Okay, well, I'm really glad that you applied for that grant and being proactive about that because that financial feasibility study is really an important key to a successful plan, including the zoning. Judy Barrett is, what do they, they always refer to the godfather of, she must be the godmother of, of planning in this capacity. She's really amazing. We've worked with her before and I'm really excited about the community participation in this. There's a lot of misinformation about what this is, so I hope that people will really come out and spend some time to learn about this and why it's so important and what it really means to our community. If you have younger college-age or a little bit older family members that want to stay close by to their families here. If you have younger college-age or a little bit older family members that want to stay close by to their families here, it's very hard for them to find a place. We've actually lost several young people that worked, that volunteered on our boards and committees while they were in college, and then they had to move out of town because they couldn't afford to live here. So we've seen it firsthand. We've also seen a lot of older people in the community say that they have to be concerned, and some have moved to less expensive communities because there was no affordable housing options for them. Or I I won't say affordable housing. I'll say housing that's affordable because people seem to get a little bit uncomfortable when you use the phrase affordable housing. So these are people that are, you know, workers that work in the stores, in retail, in manufacturing, that that send their kids to our colleges, so this is important, so. Any comments, questions?
Well said.
Yeah, I just see this as a very pragmatic step to an analysis to further weigh our options. You know, we don't know where we're going to go from here, in what direction, and we need this to get to there, so it's very cut and dry for me.
Absolutely agree. It's fantastic that you pursued the grant and that we were through it. And I, you know, I'm very eager to see how things continue with community outreach on this and making sure we continue to work to dispel some of the myths around affordability and what that means.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Excellent.
And we also do have a website. So if you go to the Planning Board's page, there's a very large M. B. T. A. Communities banner which you can click on. Has a lot of information, a summary of the situation, a lot of the documents that the town has been using to date.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
So I move to approve contract P. C. D. twenty twenty-four dash zero one Barrett Planning Group L. L. C. M. B. T. A. Communities Zoning Economic Feasibility Study, amount of forty-five thousand dollars.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. Thank you so much. Good to see you, Wayne.
Thank you, Wayne.
Next up is a discussion and vote for the Blanchett Ames Elementary School, Break Builders Corp., project change order number fourteen. Walter, what are you going to do with all your free time when this project is over?
Hopefully head right into the next. So I believe everyone has an effect at the standard memo that we sent with the recommendation for change orders. So I just, I'll give a quick little update on the project. We are, again, everyone knows substantially complete. We just wrapped up our ten-month warranty walk, so a part of the commissioning requirement through the M. S. B. A. is once you are at ten months since the building's been open, the contractors walk through with the owners and kind of highlight any difficulties or trouble or things that they feel are incomplete or just not working properly. We have a list of about thirty items ongoing right now in either some type of repair or potential change order item that would be captured as, not not this one, but probably one or two others. But they're very minor. We just need to work around the school to get them wrapped up. Some of them are wants, some of them are needs, and some of them are going to be required to get final sign-off from the building commissioner and A. H. Js. So we're in great shape right now. I think we're holding about six percent of the remaining contingency and reserve for known risk. So that's really minor. We don't even expect, I wouldn't expect to expend all of that, but that's what we're at right now.
Okay, great.
And I can run through the ten or so P. C. Os that make up change order fourteen for you. Two twenty-five, P. C. O. two twenty-five, batting cages, so there was no stone dust carried or edging carried at the batting cages. Really going to be, would have been a maintenance issue. There was just grass carried under it, no way to mow around it. So the T. R. C. went ahead and adjusted that to put the stone dust in there and landscape edging so they can easily mow and maintain. R. F. P. sixty-six added roller shades, so if anyone's been to the school, you see the four-hole windows. There was a desire from the school to put roller shades, not really a custom, they are a custom order, but they're not a custom thing to put on there. But that was requested, so that was added in. P. C. O. two twenty-seven, which was approved by the board last week, our last meeting, was the adjustment to the substantial completion date of six-two. P. C. O. two twenty-eight vestibule O. Two lighting changes. This was programming and requests from a few different parties but working together to make sure all parties are happy with the outcome of that at the vestibules. P. C. O. two thirty-one was an added gate to the softball field to allow, again, for additional access for mowers to get through. There's a tight area between the playgrounds and between the softball field that a mower really couldn't get to without a double gate, double-door gate right there. So that was added in. P. C. O. two thirty-two, wiring the CAF Two interactive ramp. That was a small change order for the Vangie to get the H. D. M. I. cable and pole plates in there for that. P. C. O. two thirty-three, fax lines to the I. D. F. room. This was the added fax line for, I believe, the nurses' station for the printer for fax. P. C. O. two thirty-five B, revised signage and ramp graphics. There was revised signage and graphics, not at the ramp, sorry. At the, if anyone's been in the large cafeteria, there was a future wall that was prepared for this graphic. And through a couple of design iterations with Perkentine's Man and through the school, they've come up with a great graphic to portray on that. Be the east wall near the bathrooms outside of that. P. C. O. two thirty-six, irrigation shed louvers. These were not shown in the drawings, but they were recommended by the landscape and irrigation in order to get some air moving in that irrigation shed. Nothing shown on the drawings, so those were added in. And P. C. O. two thirty-eight, steel landscape edging at the courtyard walkway. So at the same time that the landscape was able to complete the landscape edging at the batting cages, they also did some edging at the ramp in the the courtyard, the sensory courtyard. So there was a second ramp, a second stone path for egress added there, so we added edging to keep that area clean. And then the last one, P. C. O. two forty, there was a tree that just was not going to make it through. So rather than have a very gnarly-looking tree, we removed it and we took the stump out, and that one really fell off. That is the group of P. C. Os, and if anyone has any questions, have a good day.
And there was one at the bottom of this, P. C. O. two thirty-five B, for the graphics on the orchid wall, or is that what you were talking about before?
No, P. C. O. two thirty-five B, so I said ramp and I said orchid wall. That is outside of the the signage ramp. So there was a piece of the orchid, the tall walls, one of them needed to be redone, but this is also for that other location.
Okay, excellent. Any questions?
No, thank you for the thorough explanation as always.
The only thing that threw me is a fax line. Twenty twenty-three. I know, I know.
Oh, I, it's, I think it's a, I think a thing that they
Oh, okay.
Use a fax line to use those. Always surprised by it.
Yep, understood. I'm good with everything else now.
All right. Would somebody like to make a motion to accept project change order number fourteen?
Someone, pardon.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Thanks for being here tonight.
Well, thanks, Walter.
Thank you, Walter.
Next is a discussion and vote on the intermunicipal agreement between the town of Easton and the town of Bridgewater for Fire Department Apparatus Maintenance Services.
The chief's here. We'd like to hear from him, but this is the same form of agreement that has been approved by the board a handful of times already. I think about a half dozen times where one of the kind of initiatives to try to take better care of our assets and generate revenue in the process that the chief came up with was to in-house civilian mechanic service in the fire department rather than competing with everyone else for a huge shortage of skilled mechanic labor out there. So we're able to take better care of our equipment, spend less money doing it. And when we have time for the mechanic, which is always important as part of this, no one jumps the line above Easton fires' needs, but when there's time, our mechanic can service fleets of neighboring fire departments and generate revenue doing it. So this would be between Easton and the town of Bridgewater. It's identical to the I. M. A. U. approved at your last meeting with Random.
Anyone have any comments or questions?
Once again, to get the great idea. I am impressed.
I'm very impressed. I just, is there a point at which you'll you'll say, we're we're not going to take anymore? I'd be remiss if I didn't, I mean, we only have Mr. Hicks, the one mechanic, right? Is there a waiting list at this point?
No, I mean, do you wave on the microphone?
It's kind of like, yeah, sorry.
I was going to ask anyway, so.
Good evening. Thank you.
So there there is a point. We're still feeling out each department. A few of these departments, they're, they still have internal people who might do an oil change or send larger repairs to us. So we're still feeling out where that is, and as we bring on a new department, we wait a little bit. We've had these in the pipeline, and now we'll see how that all plays out. But we do have some opportunities to deal with things beyond the regular day with overtime or Mr. Hicks. So we have some capacity still, but at some point, there is a line, and then we may even become building restricted for a little while and hopefully resolve that. But those are the competing factors for limiting our our capacity.
Okay. Thank you. Just, I had to throw it out there because it seems like every other month we're adding somebody, which is great, but on the back end, you're like, wait a minute, at what point?
I think it's going to slow down a little bit.
Good.
It might be Somerset, but I think in general, that's, this is our core, initial core, and then we'll we'll develop it from there.
Excellent. Thank you.
I think it's really great. I remember when this was just a concept that you were floating out there and that, you know, Easton, that people that work in Easton feel empowered to bring their ideas forward and really make them happen is really great, so thank you for that.
Appreciate the opportunity to do so.
All right. Craig, do you want to make a motion?
So I I move to approve the intermunicipal agreement between the town of Easton and the town of Bridgewater for Fire Department Apparatus Maintenance Services.
So moved.
So that's Bodger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. And next up, we have a discussion and vote contract H. C. S. twenty twenty-four dash zero one McGovern Auto Municipal, twenty twenty-four Ford Maverick Hybrid.
Sure, thank you, Dottie. So attached in your packet is a contract for helping community services purchased off of a consortium purchasing group. This is a small step towards hybridization and electrification of our lighter-duty fleet where we can. This will replace an existing internal combustion engine vehicle in the Health Community Services Department. That's at the end of its useful life, a hybrid vehicle.
That's exciting.
Yeah.
Any comments, questions?
I do have a question. So with these hybrid vehicles, do we, are we getting federal rebates?
I'm not sure. I think I'm not, so I'm not expert in which types qualify for the Inflation Reduction Act, but I think that the federal rebates you're referring to, the very new ones, are for E. Vs. I will check.
I don't know about for municipal vehicles, but I know personally, I just bought a hybrid, and it was an incredible rebate. It was a lot.
So we will check, and perhaps that's why I was actually quite surprised with the price for this, at thirty thousand for a hybrid truck. So perhaps there's rebates baked in, but I will check on that.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Where's the, where would they do the charging station on that, do we have?
So this is not applying in hybrid. This is, I guess you would call that older technology.
Regenerative.
A regenerative hybrid. We are working to look at our options for having a small port here for what we hope to eventually get to with E. V. trucks for the lighter-duty vehicles here. But even with green communities grants, it's it's still been a pretty meaningful cost because of having to run the wires to where we need to go. So we're we're trying to work that out, and we'll find a find a way forward in the next year or so as we move towards that electrification goal.
All right, excellent. Any other comments, questions? All right.
I move to approve contract H. C. S. twenty twenty-four dash oh one McGovern Auto Municipal, twenty twenty-four Ford Maverick Hybrid for Health Community Services.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. So we got two more minutes, so let's do, speaking of minutes, acceptance of minutes, August seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.
So I'll move, Bodger.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. And let's see, did I miss anything in here? You guys are really good about catching that.
Wow.
No, we could take a break for one minute if you'd like.
Yeah, sure. We'll take a, take a two-minute break so that we can start right at six forty-five on the the timed items for, where is it?
Public safety, public works.
For public safety, public works. All right, it is six forty-five. We took our two-minute break. And just want to say that we're excited to get into the next phase of this timed item for public safety, public works, facility replacement. If there are members of the public that are on the Zoom and they're watching this and they have some questions, we'd ask you to please type your questions into the Q. And A., and they'll be answered either during or after the segments. Sean will be taking, keeping an eye on that, and so, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. So we have Chief Alexander, Chief Bowden, Director Field at the presenters table. I'm going to take the lead on a presentation and walk us through tonight a couple of areas where I'm going to pitch it to agency leadership to talk a little bit about the impact of this project for their personnel. So for anyone tuning in, I'm Connor Reddum, Town Administrator here in Easton. Tonight is a major milestone for this project. We have been working with Municipal Building Committee, Chair from some room, thank you, Andy, for two years on this project now, which began in earnest about ten years back. We're doing a comprehensive assessment of all the municipal and school facilities in Easton to take a look at what are the current conditions of those facilities and what are the long-term needs. And so we have worked through schematic design, and we're at a point where we have a project budget estimated tax impact. And we have established key dates for voters to weigh in and make the final say on if this project proceeds or not. So this presentation has three main components. The first one is to talk about what the project is, why it's important, why are we doing it now, and what are the real challenges with these facilities that exist today for police, fire, and public works, and how will this project address those challenges? Second section, we'll talk about the budget. What does a project cost from a construction standpoint? How can we feel good about the decisions we're making if that's a good value proposition compared to, you know, repair renovations, delaying the project, phasing the project, and what it will cost for folks' taxes and water rates if we advance? And then the third section is just a brief summary of where folks can learn more, come and speak with us, share their concerns, ask questions so that they can feel suitably informed before making decisions on October twenty-third, have a special town meeting on November fourth, debt exclusion. So why this project is that we have police, fire, public works facilities in Easton that were originally constructed between when color TV first went on the market in nineteen fifty-two and before we landed on the moon in nineteen sixty-nine. We have other buildings even older than that that we use. The Water Division Building was constructed in nineteen forty-five. One of the sheds that Public Works uses was built in eighteen eighty-seven, shortly after the Civil War ended. We have gotten a lot of good use out of these buildings. The community has gotten a lot of use out of them. They've lived a long life, but they are simply past their useful life. And so when looking at these facilities, there's really five main challenges we have. They don't have enough space. They don't have the right kinds of space. They don't have the safety features that they ought to have for the first responders, inclusive of public works, that work in them or for the community and the environment that surround them. They have failing and non-code compliant infrastructure and features. And they're also not as functional as they could be for public access. So we're going to show a brief video that just, you know, we could go through a million slides, but, you know, the picture's worth a thousand words. Hopefully, this video is worth a million. It's going to be a little loud for you folks sitting right near the speaker. I apologize, but hopefully for us in the room, it works.
At one time, typically two to three supervisors in here, but six share the office. As you can see, completely overrun with training records, equipment. And again, to ask our officers or our supervisors to use this small space, it's it's becoming very difficult for them to manage a shift when they're in this type of environment. As you can see, other than our filing cabinets, we are now stacking tubs that we have regularly buying from W. B. Mason to store our records in and keep them secured in these offices. So again, unless it's just continually buying filing cabinets, we don't have any other room to safeguard these records. This is, this is the police department's central records area, and you'll see that we've run out of room, and we've just added cabinet after cabinet after cabinet. And this goes back to several of the records that I mentioned we can't throw out. This serves as the hub of all town servers, and clearly, we have outgrown this room as well. So as you can see, we have really used up all the space that we possibly can between our police vehicles our police vehicles, our mountain bikes, our speed sign, and in fact, our animal control officer has nowhere to put her temporary kennel, so they end up on the floor in our garage. So as you can see, this is the men's locker room facility. One thing I would like to point out is the buckling of the floor. We have had constant sewer issues where we are constantly relying on the DPW and doing work orders to correct this old plumbing. This is the training room for a total of 40 officers that we have, including our civilian staff, and we just can't provide training for everybody at once. We can no longer host community meetings because, as you see, we have an arrest coming in right now. We would have to have everybody leave, go to the lobby and wait until everybody was processed and out of this area, then bring them back in.
So this is the only connection inside between police and fire, and it joins through the boiler room. So you come on in here, and you can see, as you can see, everything in here is extremely dated. There have been attempts to update them over the years, but the building just doesn't sustain them. It's just so old and so difficult. Everything from thermostats that don't actually control what they're supposed to, air conditioning units that are constantly failing, circulator pumps that let go, and pipes that are breaking and leaking. It's a constant problem in this building. Another problem with this building is asbestos. This building has asbestos in it. It was built before the prohibition on asbestos. So that's another issue of any type of reuse or expansion of this building is it would have to be remediated. Some of our gear are extorted, so that's fire gear. The problem with it is, it's out in these trucks. Even though we have these yellow hoses that you can see attached to the truck that collects the exhaust, it's still difficult to maintain a perfectly clean space, and we're getting these diesel particulate carcinogens on our fire gear that we're trying to keep clean. And then we put it on, and then we put it on and wear it. So if you're doing even just regular truck checks, so we check our trucks every day to make sure they're ready to go, even just opening our doors goes right over, and if it's not parked perfectly, you hit and you damage the paint, you can't get in and out. So it's very, very tight. This is our EMS equipment, so this is the cleanest place we can get to put our equipment that actually goes on people. You know, you can see we're spilling out. We've got things on top of everything. And on top of that, our fire alarm system's in the same room, our copier's in the same room, and then the only bathroom that we could separate for our female firefighter is right here. So one thing that Easton Fire doesn't have in any facility is a training room, conference room. We have no place to have meetings. If I wanted to bring a few people in to have a meeting, I have no space in any of the stations. This is the culmination of any place we could go to bring anybody. So if we had to have a department training, this would be the only space, and we can't fit all of our firefighters in here.
Yeah, so this building was never built for the equipment that we have today. This is the shop floor. This is where we maintain our equipment and park some equipment indoors during inclement weather, but we can only really fit a handful of vehicles inside. We have 60 vehicles in the DPW fleet, but most of them are outside, and that's not a great thing for our fleet. It shortens the life of the vehicles. So this is the lean-to structure. This is built to at least keep the trucks undercover, which is nice, but this is well past its prime. The size of our vehicles have gotten bigger over the years, so we can only use a few of these bays for our bigger trucks. The older ones can fit on some of those smaller bays.
Some of the deficiencies is, you know, they don't have adequate lighting, they don't have adequate ventilation, not enough height to actually lift the trucks appropriately to work on them, which also causes injuries for employees working in awkward positions. Also, you know, typically, you would see these buildings sprinklered. This building is currently not sprinkled. And then the floor drains for the appropriate drainage, which do not work here anymore. Therefore, you know, it is not environmentally friendly when trucks and vehicles leak.
Yeah. During winter operations, you'll see melting snow off vehicles as they come in to be maintained because they blew a hose, and hydraulic oil and meltwater will puddle a couple inches deep all through the garage. And that's not a, you know, a safe environment for people to work, not a safe thing for our mechanics to try to repair those vehicles in those conditions. So in this area, we have our fluid storage, lack of secondary containment, which is no longer up to code. So this is primarily the locker storage for the seasonal employees we have. We hire about 10 seasonal employees to mow lawns at the schools and throughout town. And so this is where they kind of muster, they eat here with the trucks and the fumes. This is the storage for our two, some of our most expensive vehicles, our grapple and our bucket truck. And then we have addition, so this is our only two that are dedicated inside storage. They barely fit in here, and we're going to be going for a new grapple truck soon, so we're going to have to spec it out so it actually will fit in here because a modern grapple truck probably wouldn't fit in this space. There's overhead storage, but it's not appropriate. It's not load rated. It doesn't have railings, doesn't have the proper heights once you're up there, doesn't have the proper means to get up there, but we have no alternative. All that equipment has to be somewhere, or it's going to be outside. So this is a staff office in here. It's basically a closet storage area slash supervisor's office. Again, not the ideal. Supervisor should have a proper office, and that's where we stand. The biggest issues here are the environmental noncompliance and worker health and safety.
There's a lot to unpack there. There's a lot that we're trying to cover, but it ties back to those main themes that these facilities are past their useful lives. They are too small. They don't have the right kinds of space, and they're not safe. You know, we have begun really working to get information out to the public, and although we've been talking about this at the select board, Municipal Building Committee's been talking about this for two years. We know that for most folks, this is not what they're necessarily spending their free time doing, is watching these meetings. And so this can feel pretty sudden. So just really quickly, want to note that this process goes back almost 10 years to that facilities assessment in 2014. Municipal Building Committee had been publicly recommending replacement of these facilities in 2019. That got shelved for a bit due to COVID. Voters in Easton approved funding in 2021 to assess the feasibility of replacing these facilities, and that's what we've been working on, how we got here. So what those conditions actually mean for Easton, for the first responders, for public works, there is a higher risk of injury in facilities like this. And so, these jobs are inherently riskier than a lot of professions, but you don't want the facilities that these folks report to work in and live in to make an already dangerous job even harder and potentially more dangerous. And so these facilities, it can increase for risk of injury and also increase for risk of property loss for the town. So in DPW, you saw there's inadequate clearances, lack of overhead lifts to support our mechanics, there's not adequate railings, ventilation for exhaust, there's lack of containment for any kind of spill of any oils or fuels, and not just for the employees, but it goes out into the lot and into the ground. The police have poor climate control. We have folks slipping and falling in places they shouldn't be. Fire has, you know, dated decontamination protocols that are not best practice to reduce environmental risk and exposure to carcinogens for our firefighters. And so, there is a kind of obvious moral question there that, all things equal, we would rather have workplaces that are as safe as possible, but there's, we know that there's a cost of that. There's also a cost of not having that. And so, there are not only losses that could potentially be suffered by employees if they're injured, but also to the community. So these are, two out of three of these departments function 24/7, and there's an emergency, DPW is right there with them. For every three-month injury we have, we end up spending between overtime to backfill and other costs, close to three times as much as tax money as it would otherwise cost to provide that service every time there's a three-month injury. Severe injuries or work-related disabilities can easily cost into the six figures. Something that really was jarring even for me working on this for so long is that there are no sprinklers in any of these facilities. There's no sprinklers in any police, fire, or public works facility in Easton for the people who work and live and sleep in them, or for the millions in highly advanced equipment that voters have been very supportive to support through successive town meetings. For the permanent records that are in these facilities stored in hallways, there are no sprinklers. There's no garaging for most of the fleet at Public Works. So there's an $8 million vehicle fleet, 60 vehicles that can't fit in the lean-tos we have, and most of them sit exposed, leading them to degrade faster and leading us to have to come back to voters and ask for newer vehicles sooner than we otherwise would. There's no wash base for these vehicles. So the choice is basically have runoff that's not environmentally sound going into the ground, or not wash corrosive materials off of these vehicles. And then finally, having facilities like this is a recruitment challenge. It's really competitive. Job market's tight for all sectors, but it's no different municipal government. You know, we have great workers here. They do an amazing job. We try to take good care of our employees, have competitive compensation, but other folks do as well. And if all other things are equal, if you don't have a hometown affinity, and you're a younger professional looking to get into fire, police service, public works, and you see these facilities, that could be a major hindrance on recruitment. And we also have a lack of gender parity in these facilities. We hired four police and firefighters last week. Three of them are women. It's a great thing for the town, but our current stations do not have the equipment for these first responders. There's also other costs associated with maintaining buildings past their useful lives. So again, these facilities, we've gotten a lot of life out of them. They do not need to be replaced because they haven't been repaired. They're simply just too old, and we can't repair our way out of a 70-year-old design, right? If, you know, you moved into a two-bedroom home before having any children and then became a family of six, changing the paint or the re-roofing the house would not change that it fundamentally doesn't fit, right? The community has more than doubled in population since these facilities were built. These facilities collectively have about 59,000 square feet. Through the programming and the schematic design, we know they need closer to 130,000 square feet. There's also costs to our annual operations, trying to just continuously put out fires at these dated facilities. Right now, for Public Works, through their capital and their R and M that they do at all-town facilities, about 80% of that spending every year goes towards police, fire, and public works facilities. That's money that's not going towards the town offices. That's money that's not going towards the Frothingham Hall, money that's not going to the town pool, because they have to just be in this reactive mode of, you know, continuing to try and plug holes in the dam at these facilities. And we're not getting a return on investment for that money. We are extending, you know, weeks, months out of these facilities that are already years past their prime. So how did the Municipal Building Committee and the project team look at all of these challenges and try to come up with a positive and a proactive solution? So we're not going to get into, you know, a bunch of different slides and flow charts showing how we made it through schematic design. I'll try to be concise and just say that the Municipal Building Committee, along with the staff and the designers, looked at what do we have today, what are the actual programmatic needs based on the size of these departments, the types of services they provide the community, where the population is today, where we expect it to go, and how do we come up with a program, a building program that has enough safe and proper type of space? How do we make it safe for employees? How do we empower these folks to better operate of keeping Easton safe? Where can we put these facilities? And part of that was also looking at the existing sites that these buildings are on. And as you'll see, none of the existing sites were chosen for a rebuild because they have too many site constraints. They're too small. So the sites are very similar to the properties themselves, where a lot of these are kind of crammed into tight residential neighborhoods where we couldn't fit the footprint of the buildings that we need. We looked at building combinations and consolidations. What was the most efficient and intelligent way to take what's, you know, depending on how you count, somewhere around 16 to 17 buildings, if you count the lean-tos and accessory structures, Public Works has scattered about town. And what we ended up with was three facilities on two sites. And then looking at operational efficiencies like cost of energy, utility costs, environmental improvements, and improving our ability to maintain our capital assets. And so what the Municipal Building Committee arrived at last October unanimously was what, an idea that the committee actually came up with, which was what they called 5B, that is for a new public safety, police, fire headquarters on 524 Depot Street on the 10 acres of municipal land set aside with a consolidated public works facility, including fleet maintenance, on the same site with an access road in the back. This would also come with a second fire station, fire substation at Daley's Corner on Stone Hill's property. And there was numerous reasons why this was picked. A question we hear a lot is, well, why didn't you just use Center School? And really, the number one motivator there was that there's no sewer at Center School, whereas 524 Depot Street does have sewer. There is really not an effective way for Public Works to maintain a vehicle fleet like what they have, to do the kinds of washing they need, and have it that that runoff and that wastewater be appropriately taken care of unless it's going into a sewer system. And the only place where that could work out of our options was at 524 Depot Street. So that was just not really on the table for Center School, although it was looked at. So there are a lot of advantages of a site, combined police, fire, and public works all having access to sewer. It consolidates the fire department from three into two stations, and Chief Alexander's going to spend a couple minutes talking about that on the next couple of slides, which will allow us to better allocate the existing staff that we have at those stations. It's in a pretty central location of the rest of town. Depot Street was obviously just rebuilt and is in as good of condition it's going to be for the next many, many, many years. And it would also allow us to have some potential reuse of other sites in the future, like Fire HQ at Bay Road and the Water Department. There were obviously some challenges with this, chief among them, that the town did not have site control over Daley's Corner versus land across from Hilliards in the northern part of town. We have since addressed that and negotiated a 50-year or 75-year lease with Stone Hill College for the five acres of land there necessary to construct that fire substation. So at ribbon cutting and other events we've been at, we've gotten a pretty common question about Lothrup Street Police and Fire, where they're currently located, and what impact that will have for the schools and for the community to not have the police and fire station on Lothrup Street. And so the next two slides, we're going to have Chief Boone from Police Department talk a little bit about, you know, what impact or role a police station actually has on where the police are. And then Chief Alexander will talk about changing the station model. So Chief Boone, if you wouldn't mind just giving an overview of the role of your headquarters and where patrol actually is.
Well, before we do that, can we just take like a quick pause? Because that's like so much. I just want to see if any of the board members have any comments or questions before we go into that, just based on digesting what we just heard.
I'm just trying to catch my breath.
I heard it last night, in detail.
Yeah, this is the culmination of years of information and, you know, hearing it not the first time, but packaged together. I have no questions, but this next section is what I get questioned most about. This, and then the number two is, what's the cost? So in hearing from these gentlemen, is, I hope people are paying attention, because even today, when I came home from work, my wife said, she had a conversation with a number of people, and this was the question that was asked. This was the, I don't want to say opposition, but the lack, the concern, or, yeah. And I hope people are paying attention to what you're about to say, because they need to hear it.
And I want people to realize that we've been talking about this for 10 years. You know, some of the people weren't on the board yet. When they came on, there's been a lot of discussion about it over the past two years while we have had this board. So someone might look at the meeting and say, wow, they're just going through the motions really fast. We have been involved in all of this, and we've been a part of these questions. So we know this, and we're trying to flag things that we think that people will be interested in. So just wanted to-
I think it's also important, Daddy, that the Building Committee is made up of citizens in this town, and they spent two years working on this project. So it's constituent involved, constituents involved, which I think is very important for people to know.
And the other thing, if you look at other towns when they're looking at consolidating, there's usually a little bit of controversy between the different, you know, police, fire. I don't know that I've seen many with DPW attached to it also, but to have all three, you know, two chiefs, directors, everyone be aligned and working together to talk about how critical this is for our community, to me, is really noteworthy.
The only thing I would add is, watch the videos from home or at any point in time, and what, ooh, or whoa. Go in person, because the videos don't quite do it justice of how overwhelming the situation is at all these facilities. So I think it gives you an idea of being there and having been there. Great example, we went through the police station with scouts. I can't imagine all the officers coming in for any kind of training or vet union did them all there. Like, we had small children who were, you know, fighting in the hallway, moving through. So it's just, it's, the video doesn't quite completely capture what you see these doors.
Thank you. All right, Chief, thank you.
So as far as the location, that's a question that I've gotten a lot too. You know, it always comes back to, oh, if you were near Center School, if you were down towards 5 Corners, if you were staying on Locust Street, you'd be closer to the school. If you're on Depot, you're closer to Route 130 and all the hotspots. And what I've tried to explain to people is, regardless where our headquarters is and our base is, we're not always there, and hardly ever there as far as patrol response. So to walk you through a typical day, you know, coming into work, whether it's 8:00 AM, 4:00 PM, or midnight, our officers come in, they get briefed on what's happened throughout the last 24 hours. They get their assignments. I think you have the slide here. We deploy our officers into two sectors. The town is split in half by 123. The town is split in half by 123. You'll see on this, the shaded area is the north and below that is the south. So typically what a ship will look like is a supervisor and at least four officers. So we'll deploy two officers into the north, two into the south. They're out of the police station. And so we have randomized patrols throughout town, making sure we're having positive community interactions, not leaving any area uncovered. Right now, I'm dealing with a lot of people that have traffic complaints. So we'll have directed patrols, ones on Howard Street, ones at Turnpike and Purchase, some of our hotspots, you know, on the street up here at 138. So once these officers get their assignments, part of their randomized patrol is setting up to conduct safety checks somewhere, whether it's running radar or just on our hotspots. So if a call comes in here, our staff could be down at the swamp, you know, with the car accident near the, near Turnpike and in Foundry. So we're just mobilized at all times. So hardly ever are our staff deploying from the police station. Now, I won't say it doesn't happen. An accident could come at 8:00 in the morning, that happens, and they'll leave right from the station. That's usually when you'll see a lot of crews just leaving and trying to find a way through a lot of traffic on Lothrup Street, which is a busy residence where, which we're mindful of. But other than really leaving at shift, we're out in the field. You know, if we have a detainee or if we were installing car seats or we're coming back to the station, that's, that's where a focus, you know, then. But then they're back on the road, that's where we want them, probably in town. So as far as our location, you know, to say it doesn't matter, we're out there. So it doesn't matter if it's on Depot, if it's on Lothrup, if it's Main and Wash, we're out in the field. So that's a question I get a lot and that's how I try to explain to people there. You know, if it's Monday through Friday during the day, you might get me coming if, if everyone's tied up and it could be me and a detective if they're there and they're not, you know, interviewing someone who's all working a case. Right now, we have myself, the deputy chief, and a desk officer that's, you know, really handling a lot of lobby calls. We have a lot of walk-in traffic. So they can't leave the station. So, so really, it's, it's me in the station a lot when I'm not here.
Thank you, Chief. And then we, I think we should look at fire as well because police, fire together on Lothrup Street. So Chief Alexander, you can just talk about like, you know, so police are not, unlike fire, police are not in the station waiting for a call. Fire, that is the case. And so one of the things that was done as part of a study with municipal building committee was that there was a response time study commissioned to make sure that moving from three to two stations, that there would be, you know, nearly identical coverage for response within five minutes, including the school campus. But just talk about, you know, the realities of, we have a three-station model now, all things equal, if we add unlimited staff, you know, more stations is great, but we don't. And so I think a lot of folks, myself included, until we did this project, wouldn't think that when they drive by Station 3 on Bay Road or Station 2 on Depot Street, that there's only two firefighters in those buildings, which means they can only send one vehicle. So can you just talk about what those challenges are and, you know, what your opinion on what the two-station model will be?
Absolutely, thank you. So one of the issues we have with our current staffing model is that, as Connor pointed out, Station 2 and Station 3, Bay Road and Depot Street, both just have two firefighters each. Everything the fire service does is a team sport, there's nothing we can do alone. And every major incident requires way more than two people, you know, 10, 20, it's a big fire, or more. And what we're doing right now is we're dividing our staff up into levels that they can't really function safely at a fire ground or a major incident until more help arrives. And the other issue is that when we have our ambulances out, our Bay Road station especially, the coverage down that end of town goes away. And that's 25, 20, 25% of your day, there's no coverage down there, which means help for that side of town is much further away. So we identified that we could fix that through this building project. By consolidating our staff into a two-station model, no station will have less than four firefighters and they will respond with a more robust, safer response, not only for the firefighters, but for the public because we'll be going together in a coordinated response. It's very difficult for our officers to try to pivot. We have to pivot because our staffing level isn't quite what it should be for a three-station model, which is why we're doing this exercise. Sometimes we have to pivot in ways and adapt in ways on the fly to deal with those situations that you wouldn't normally do in a larger city-type environment with multiple stations. And our officers struggle to coordinate that in seconds. And when you can consolidate the staff and communicate directly with them face-to-face, who's taking what and what truck, who's doing what, and responding as a team, unify the second you leave the door, we're safer because we're able to do it in a more appropriate manner. The fire service and the public gets that same safety because we're showing up ready to go together. And again, everything we do is done together. So by consolidating down from the three stations to the two, keeping our staffing up, both ends of town, so if you even use like Chief Boone's North and South, both sides of those sectors will have a staffed engine that can provide not only fire, but EMS, advanced life support, even if our ambulances are out. And we don't have that right now. So we're going to be able to provide that day one. We're going to help make this community safer as a result.
Thank you, Chief. Questions before we go?
I do, I do. So thank you very much for that explanation. That definitely helps articulate it to the people who are asking me. But I want to drill down or ask a few more questions on, so Bay Road, Depot Street, right now they're manned two and two, correct? So if there's an ambulance call, they're shut down, there's nobody there. You get an ambulance call at each of these stations almost every day, right? Several times a day? So for, it would be fair to say, a large portion of the day, those are shut down as it currently functions, every single day. So with this other model, they, you know, it goes from three to two, but that reduction means that it won't, these stations won't be shut down for, for that period of time?
Correct. They'll never, they'll, when I say never, it means that we're not all a structured fighter.
Understood.
But under normal circumstances, not a large incident where we're rolling all of our resources, there is a staff with Easton firefighter, firefighter paramedics in all of Easton at all times. But we don't have that now.
I just, I said exactly what you said, I just tried to tighten it up. I'm basically saying it to you to be like, is this okay to repeat to people? Because, okay, that's a fair explanation. That's, I think that's what we need.
So I get that question a lot from people and, you know, it's not like you guys just did your own analysis of that, right? So you hired consultants that did a specific report that is available on the website and it's highlighted the video for that meeting where people can hear the discussion about it. There was a lot of that because, you know, back in the day, there, there was a few studies about going from three stations to two stations, from three existing to two existing. And that's, that's different, you know, the time of, the period of that was very different. The locations were not going to change. These locations are tweaked to accommodate that. And the fire service has changed a lot in the year since that happened. So, you know, in my opinion, if our chief tells us that that is the way that his group works the safest and the most efficient, to me, that's, that's what I feel comfortable hearing, right? But I just want to stress that people should look at that report and, and, you know, think about it themselves and ask us more questions if you have them because, you know, this is something that a lot of thought went into, a lot of time and energy.
I do have one more question. I'm sorry. So one of the other comments I hear often is parents of school-aged children on the campus. Can you talk about the reaction time? Because obviously it would be coming from Daley's Corner, the reaction time, so I can share with them to quell their concern.
So obviously, we'd be moving off the campus, if you will. You know, there's no denying that. But we're moving still within a very robust, strong response time relative to our industry. Like that is a good response time. You know, there's no arguing that we're not on the campus and I think it's a part that we're very honest with people about. But the reality is, is our response time will still be low by any standards. And when it comes to the schools, you know, we work at the schools every day, we have a great relationship with the schools and staff and superintendent cabral. And I can tell you that when you combine our response time, our capabilities with the training and capabilities of the schools, I have complete confidence in both school staff, nurses, the firefighters, the paramedics, that the impact to our children will not cause them harm, there will not be a noticeable difference when it comes to that type of situation. And, you know, we will be able to take care of our most precious children in town and make sure that they're okay and protect the buildings and the staff. We're not, as a parent, you know, a three-year-old and a 12-year-old, I would not want my children jeopardized by anything that we're choosing to do as a community now. And I can tell you that what we're going to do is going to provide the schools with a very strong response, keep everybody safe, but also take care of all of Easton as well. And I think that that's important, that we're looking at all aspects and I think we're doing a good job of that and we're making the most of it. And one of the things that's really important too is that we never had in the past the opportunity to have the locations we have for these buildings that we're going to go to. And we do have them now. And I think if we didn't have these locations, it might not have worked. If you had to go somewhere further away, we couldn't advocate for this. But we have it and if it's just right, and I'm very confident in our ability to protect our children, the school staff, and the rest of Easton.
Oh, I will just say one thing. So my, both my children and my wife are on that campus all day and I agree with you for what it's worth.
I would just like to add to that, that in addition to looking at, you know, hypothetical runtimes from these locations, one of the things that we did that kind of went under the radar because of COVID and everything else is that we regionalized our 911 dispatch and went to substantially more accurate, more precise, and much faster dispatch technology that we never had when we were relying on local dispatch. Up until we did CEMRAC in 2021, if you called from a cell phone, which most people do for 911, you got bounced to state 911 and had to, you know, explain, potentially under extreme duress when you're in an emergency, what your location is, where you are, to somebody nowhere near Easton, who then has to determine what is the appropriate local public safety dispatch center to then route you to, where you had to explain a lot of that again. Now, when you call 911 in Easton, Foxborough, or in our Mansfield, which is the CEMRAC district, they immediately know where you are within a few feet based on your cell phone data. And that's being sent to the fire and police station with, you know, color-coded light response and the apparatus bay going to everyone's watches immediately. And so that, you know, takes calls that sometimes could be minutes down to in the seconds. So we have improved that capability across the entire community in a way that we never would have been able to do even five or 10 years ago. So we, we've been working really diligently and deliberately with public safety for years now to make sure that we have really strong response times because we, we've talked about a lot in Easton, we have like, we have quality over quantity, we have really good staff, we don't have a lot of them for a community of this size. And so making sure that we're leveraging good technology and best practices so we can get people to where they need to be is something that we've been able to do and helps make these, you know, hopefully calm some of those concerns about the literal location of where a building.
And I would think that, you know, maybe having the right apparatus at the right time in the right distance makes it, you know, it doesn't help you if you have an unmanned station and that's where, where you needed to get the ambulance or whatever from, so.
Correct. And it's, you know, it's important to note that at any given moment, I'm sure one of our ambulances has gone out during this meeting and the, our response model has changed during that period and we have to pivot and adapt. And although we have an ambulance currently at Lothrup Street, that goes out a lot. And that means that the next ambulance into that area would be coming from Bay Road. So we're doing this already now, moving trucks around, responding differently, and we're getting the job done. And I know that in this new system, we're only going to make it better.
Great. All right, great. So we'll move on, Chiefs, thank you. So this is what this looks like. This is where we have to move to to address all of these challenges and continue to keep the community safe. So you have here the schematic design, aerial view of 524 Depot Street, and we'll get into a little more detail on each of these. And then you have the fire substation at Daley's Corners. So this would be the public safety complex. I'm not going to read through the slide because we want to be succinct here, but, you know, some key features here is that there would actually be a community room. So this is outside of, you know, borrowing from Frothingham Hall for a meeting, which requires moving a lot of technology, having a lot of staff there to make that meeting work. This is our largest room and I think there's 19 seats. We have 25,000 residents. We could, you know, use the schools when they're available, but then you, you have 19-seat room or a thousand-person auditorium. We don't have functional training space for these staff, but that would also become a community room that would be available for public use and in emergencies would allow an emergency operations center as well. Here is a rendering for our architect room. I will say it's schematic level, so it's subject to change because sometimes people get, you know, strong feelings about whether it should or should not stay exactly that way if a project is approved. But this is what the kind of human scale of this building on Depot Street would be. This is the back of that property. So this would be a consolidated public works facility, garage, fleet maintenance, fueling. You know, we've talked a lot about the needs there, I won't belabor that by going through all the numbers. But again, another kind of community asset we wanted to make sure that we took advantage of here is that this is the 10 acres of municipal set aside on this property that can be used for municipal building. But we wanted to take advantage of, first of all, we'll be cleaning out a lot of solid waste that's on this site as part of redevelopment, including solid waste impacting wetland resources. And we want to include a trailhead to the 146 acres of permanently preserved slash passive rec land here. So people have a safe, clean, well-lit, and accessible way to access this property that the community purchased nearly 10 years ago. Here's a watercolor rendering for Public Works. And this would be the fire substation across from Hilliards on Main Street, Washington, smaller building for the new buildings, much larger than most of our current ones. This would be on the five acres of land that we've leased from the college. Just really quick, we wanted to incorporate here and we touched on it, that one of the real huge benefits here for our employees' safety is that the fire station, both on Depot Street and at Daley's Corner, would have modern, safe, decontamination floor plans that would allow folks coming in from a scene to safely get their gear off into the laundry, get themselves clean, and get into, you know, their living quarters without continuous exposure to carcinogens, coming back in and help keep them safer because there is substantially more cancer prevalence in fire service. And so doing things like this to help reduce those risks for an already dangerous job is a really important objective we can achieve. And so here is a watercolor rendering of what that station could look like as well. So what this project will do, it gives enough space for our first responders in public works for today and tomorrow. It will fit today's needs and be usable for the next 50 years. It'll allow improved emergency operations control. Right now, the headquarters of these three agencies are on different part, all three are separate. And we can do a lot with Zoom, but when a tornado hits, you want these three chiefs in one place calling the shots together and everyone is driving across town, which depending on what event just happened, can be quite difficult if there's trees across the road. This puts them all on one campus. Publicly available community room. We would have improvements to the lifespan of our fleets by actually having a garage for them. We could generate more revenue with a mechanic program that the chief and fire department have started by having more mechanic bays. These would be safe workplaces for the employees and it'd reduce environmental risk, reduce cancer risk, reduce liability for injury, evidence management, other hazards would improve employee health and make us more competitive for hiring these really critical staff. These buildings would be modern, efficient, they would have appropriate building systems and site infrastructure, so they'd be substantially more energy efficient. We're looking at going geothermal for these buildings, HVAC right now. We're, you know, using kind of hodgepodge of older HVAC technology. This would be substantially more energy efficient, substantially lower carbon footprint. We would reduce environmental exposure, not just for the staff, but for the community. Right now, Public Works doesn't have functioning floor drains. We saw in the video, they pool oil in there. We would have functioning drainage connecting to sewer. We would have an opportunity to remove solid waste at the Depot Street site. And we would improve our operating capacity to expend more of the funds that voters are already appropriating, appropriating every year to take better care of Frothingham Hall, the town offices, and our other assets. And then finally, these buildings would be safe and accessible spaces for first responders and for the public. The water division right now is closed to the public because it is not ADA accessible. You need to take a flight of stairs just to get into the administrative office, there's no ground-level entry. We shouldn't want that for our community. We'd have parity for our female first responders in our facilities. We don't have that right now. We need to recruit the best regardless of gender and people should be able to come and work here and have equal access to facilities. We'd have a better allocation of our existing fire resources. We would be able to take care of these first responders together rather than doing a piecemeal project where one department moves into appropriate facilities and the other two are left behind, which is the same discussion we had about the consolidation of the three schools. And then finally, they would bring a clean, accessible, and safe public trailhead to the land that voters here have already purchased. So funding this project. The construction budget is estimated about $117 million for this project. Once you add in design, construction contingencies, and soft costs, about 29%, you're looking at a construction budget of about $150 million. When we are confronted with costs this high, which frankly, none of us want, you know, I think I got that estimate as I was walking into a public meeting and got a little bit of vertigo. of vertigo. But it's, it's a completely legitimate question for someone to get when they see that, to say, well, gee, there really must be some way to do this for less money. And so we spent a lot of time with the municipal building committee going through and testing those questions. And so we looked at what would it cost to repair and expand these existing sites to provide the level of service of a community needs and keep folks safe? And because of the severity of the deficits, because of a non-code compliance, because of the site constraints, it would, it would cost us more money to try to repair and expand onsite, setting aside that it is likely not even possible due to how small the, the sites are. So although this is a large budget, which we make no qualms about and don't try to explain away, it is still a more effective way to fund what we need programmatically. So building these new police, fire, and public works facilities as one consolidated project will cost less and it will achieve more than if we try to repair and expand the aged facilities we have. When we see project costs of this scale, sometimes there's a kind of gut reaction of, okay, maybe, maybe we should just put this on a shelf for a bit and spend some more time thinking about it. In the past 10 years, public construction costs have gone up 70%. A large amount of that has been in the past three or four, even since we approved and completed the Blanche James School. Each year in this current budget, we're assuming an 8% escalation in construction prices. When you have a project budget that's in over $100 million, every year that we delay, whether it's because a project is not approved or because we're holding out for a grant, adds somewhere in the area of 10 to 14 million to this number. And so as much as I would like for a digit to be shaved off of this budget, if we don't like 150 million today, we're really not going to like 250 billion if we, billion, million if we wait 10 more years. Another thing that's come up is perhaps we phase the project and do one department at a time. And again, much like we're not going to try to blow smoke and say that Daly's Corner is closer than Lothrup Street to the schools, we're not going to suggest that doing a single department today would be, in a vacuum, a cheaper project than doing all three. But if we are going to fix these buildings, which we will have to do at some point, and we spread them out over three discrete projects over the next 10 years, you're only going to end up spending about 25% more based on current construction trends than if we do it now. And these are multi-decade borrows, so you're not, it's not as if you can fund one today, pay it off, then do the next one. You will end up adding these up, and you will end up in a cumulative place where the total cost is 250 million instead of 150. One of the real challenges for us and for communities around the state is that unlike school buildings, there is no MSBA, there's no municipal school building authority type program for police, fire, and public works in Massachusetts. There is no state grant to offset the substantial cost of these projects. There's a kind of perennial discussion on the state level. I'll be testifying to the Senate on a bill this Wednesday to establish a public safety building authority that Easton Senator Timmeltie has sponsored, which is a great initiative. But it could take, it takes time for things to move through the legislative process, to be adopted into law, to then go through a rulemaking and the agency creation process. It could, it would be years before that is available if it becomes law. And again, with the same dynamic we need to be concerned with, with waiting generally, is we're looking at, you know, an additional 10-plus million per year that we wait. And so if we say, let's hold our horses and hold out hope that a grant will become available five or 10 years from now, if the grant is for 50 million but the project cost increased by 100, you're not in the black. You're worse off. And that doesn't address any of the severe deficiencies of these buildings that exist right now. So what that means is that the reality is that the only real funding mechanisms for a capital project of this size are through a debt exclusion. And in this case, because about a third of that Public Works complex is the water division, you can allocate that to the water enterprise account. So you see a little graph here. So overwhelming majority of this project would be funded out of a debt exclusion. You have a portion of it funded out of water enterprise, and then a little bit, you know, a few million, we would anticipate with energy rebates, both from state and federal level relating to going geothermal. And so what this looks like with a multi-year borrowing strategy for your median single-family home, so these are based on assessed values, the current assessed values of single-family homes in Easton, the median is 524,800, is that we forecast when this is fully borrowed, which permanent borrowing wouldn't start until next year, you'd be looking at an annual cost of about $720 or less for the majority of homes in Easton. That's about $60 per month. So we would not expect an immediate impact if this was approved this fall in the current year, because we would be spending a full year doing detailed design of a real cash drawdown on these projects is when you hit construction. And so that's why you see that gradually phase in, in fiscal '25, '06, and '07. You see it drop a little bit from '07 to '28, because that is when Oliver Ames High School and Easton Middle School debt is paid off and falls off the levy. So that's the net new cost you would attribute to this project. We have a tax calculator that's live now. We did this with a school project. So if you go to the project website, which is eastonpsw.com, and click the About section, there's a property tax calculator there where you can plug in your assessed value, and it will generate an estimate of what the project will cost for, tailored to your home. If you don't know your home's value, there's a link right there to click the assessors database, look your home up, and get that value so you can do this analysis for yourself and see how this fits with your family and your household budget. Similarly, median condos. So the median condo assessed value in Easton right now is 290,500. Once fully borrowed in '27, '28, we anticipate the annual cost there to be about $400, which is about $33 to $35 per month. So again, whether, regardless of the type of residential property that you're in, condo or a home, you go to that website now, eastonpsw.com, and click About. There's a tax calculator that you can see what this would mean for you personally if the project is approved by voters. There is a portion of this project that would be paid out of water capital. Water bills are paid quarterly. Water rates have been increasing in Easton to fund more than $25 million water plants, both for PFOS, iron and manganese. So water rates will be gradually increasing over time, whether this project happens or not. But the net cost associated with this project, we anticipate about $6 more per quarter in fiscal '25, rising to 13 and change the next year, and topping out at about $22.75 per quarter on your water bill for this project. We don't advance a project of this size lightly. We understand that whether or not folks agree with the programmatic pitch, that this is a real cost and that this is, this is not a small ask. This is the largest project the town's ever tried to do. And so we always want to take a second to acknowledge that we know that that's real and that there are conflicting goals that we have as a community. We were speaking about affordable housing earlier here. This would add to the cost of living. There's no way around that. But that doesn't mean that you may not want to advance a project because of a programmatic need for these first responders to keep the community safe. So we have a variety of programs through the assessor's office, through the Department of Health and Community Services that offer tax relief. When we went for the Blanche James Project in 2019, board members requested, and we included on warrants, tax relief programs like the Taxation Aid Committee, and then the Veterans Aid, which is now known as the SERV Fund. We've distributed about 200,000 of direct financial assistance to seniors in need, folks with disability needs, and veterans and their spouses through those programs since that project went live. We've tried to do other things where we can help control costs for folks, like the Energy Aggregation Program, which saved millions for the community in energy costs the past few years. But we also know it's never enough, because there are some folks that these programs, you know, they, they help, but it's, you're reducing this kind of ever-rising tide. And so one of the things that is in front of the board to consider tonight, when we were looking at other communities, looking at debt exclusions for schools, 200, 250 million dollars, they, there were some creative ideas floating around out there. And one of them was to, through a special act of the legislature, adopt a local means-tested senior tax exemption. So basically, a circuit breaker tax on the local level. And so in your packet tonight, and what I hope will be on the same warrant for voters on October 23rd, would be two articles. One would be to fund this project contingent on the debt exclusion. And the second article that evening would be to petition the state to adopt a three-year senior fixed-income tax exemption program for Easton to help offset that cost increase of this project. So we talked a lot about literal costs, but one of the things that's always important to think about in the context of a project like this is that the choice for the board, the choice for the public at town meeting and at the polls on November 4th is not spend money on this project now or spend nothing. It's spend money on this project now in a proactive way for safer, more effective facilities for our first responders, or eventually pay more later for worse buildings, if we're doing it in a reactive manner, fixing them as they break.
And actually throwing, throwing money out essentially because
We're getting nothing for the money we're sending.
If we have to keep repairing these buildings and, and any big thing happens, like a boiler replacement or roof replacement, you're not investing that money.
No, you're just plugging holes.
Literally was the words out of my head.
So ultimately, it's up to voters in Easton. It's, it's up to the community. And so we have a lot of opportunities for folks to learn more about this project. We know this is a very long presentation. We are, we are kind of iterating every time we do it, trying to cut 10 minutes out here and there because it's just so much to cover. Municipal Building Committee is meeting tomorrow night. For people who haven't seen these facilities, Thursday night at 6:30, there will be a tour of Public Works, which Thursday, this Thursday at 6:30 at 130 Center Street. And then we'll have a forum. We'll have a much shorter version of this presentation as well. We'll be at the End of Summer Concert Series with project information. We'll be before the finance committee next week, back before the select board. We'll be at the Fire Open House at the NRT Fest. And then we'll have another building tour this time of Lothrup Street, again, another forum. People can come out and learn about the project. That'll be Monday, October 2nd at 6:30 at the Lothrup Street Police and Fire. And, you know, we, we have all these informational resources online. We know folks are busy. If these dates don't work, and, you know, folks are part of community groups or civic groups that are interested in this, they can send us an email and invite us, and we will, we will go meet people where they are to answer their questions and present this project. It's an incredibly important project that's going to have a huge impact on the next 50 years in this community for the people who live here and the people who work to keep them safe. And if these dates don't work, we want to meet people where they are and where they're comfortable, so they could email us. We have a project email, eastonpsw@pmaconsultants.com, or they can eat, all of our emails are publicly available online. They could call us. We're happy to go and meet with folks. And then ultimately, it'll be decided by voters. There will be a town meeting on October 23rd, 7 o'clock, Oliver Ames High School. And then planned, or what we've announced so far, the board will make that decision tonight. Debt exclusion election on November 4th, Saturday, 10 to 4 at Oliver Ames. There will be vote by mail available for this. The town clerk will be at your next meeting to talk through the kind of know-before-you-go guide so people can feel comfortable about how they can participate. As with the Blanche James School, it's a two-step process by state law. Both votes need to pass for a project to proceed. And so if that happens, we're, you're looking at about a three-year window of design, bidding, construction, starting in late '24, early '25, with an estimated completion of construction around fall of 2026. There's a ton of informational resources out there. So again, the project website is eastonpsw.com. Really encourage folks to go to the frequently asked questions section. There's a lot there about moving public safety from Lothrup Street because we have been hearing about a lot. There's video tours. All of our presentations are there. There's a project Facebook page. And, you know, we understand not everyone wants to necessarily read through stuff like this on a screen. If folks need anything, they could call our office, and we will send them anything that they need. We'll set up time to talk, anything that they would like. So thank you for your time. And if there's any more questions, we're happy to answer them.
Did we get any questions in the Q and A? No. Any questions from the board?
Connor, is there information about relief, financial relief opportunities on the PSW website, or should folks go to the town website?
They should go to the town website, but we'll do a referral, like, if that's a good idea, to redirect folks.
That's the thing I'm hearing the most concern about, and I'm very understanding to anybody, you know, we had discussion about how to impact our home budget and whatnot. So it's not something that I think anyone takes lightly. But, you know, I think you highlighted a point really, really well, that if we don't address this now, it's going to come back to us later.
Correct.
In some very frightening ways, so.
Thank you.
I was thinking about that when you were talking about it earlier. Some of the, sometimes people forget that we are also taxpayers in the same boat and looking at our household budgets the same way and making those decisions. So it's not that we're not, we're not a part of that. We are as well. And I think we all think about that when we're carefully looking at, and, you know, from the beginning when we looked at the price and you, you know, continue to find ways to, to reduce that or make it more efficient. And that's all part of the design process as well, is really trying to continue to refine that, so.
If I could just piggyback on what Jen had mentioned, if we could somehow create like a one-pager of that program, that would be fantastic to use, to hand out, to give. One of the populations that I'm most sensitive of is the demographic where it's, you know, older people on fixed incomes.
Sure.
I really concern about their ability to pay and, you know, understand their difficulties. So I would like to share with them more about that program.
Sure. And we will. We, we just got the first draft for you to consider tonight in your warrant and not to put Senator on the spot, but his, the senator's office has been working with us proactively on that, which we really appreciate, to make sure that we are clearing with Senate counsel the appropriate language, because this is not a program that exists. So in order to make it so, it needs to go not just through Eastern voters, but to the state for the legislature to adopt. So Senator, I don't know if, not to point you off, but we're
You walked in at just the right time.
The potential for the home rule petition for the senior tax relief. Your office has been very helpful with that, so we appreciate it.
So we look forward to continuing to work with the board and yourself, Mr. Town Administrator, on that whole petition for the town.
Excellent.
Absolutely.
And we also appreciate you championing the legislation to form a new MSBA-like municipal funding source for, for these projects, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll actually be conducting a hearing on that on Wednesday on the Joint Committee on Public Safety and Homeland Security.
Great.
And Mr. Reed, thank you very much for the collaboration again. But it is my bill that will create a public safety building authority based on the municipal building authority, which is a wonderful model. We've all seen it firsthand. And as we know, Chief Boone, Chief Alexander, your partners do wonderful work. Public safety in the new century. The infrastructure that's currently in place in many cases is dilapidated and just can't handle the challenges of modern-day public safety. But I am keenly aware that municipalities cannot, cannot erect these facilities on their own, much like municipalities cannot erect where there are schools on their own. And this obviously will have a built-in revenue source in the bill, much like the school building authority, and will protect our tax base in the local and protect our first responders.
So if anybody in our community would like to thank Senator Timmeltie for doing that, you can go search for him on the state legislature website, and there's an email, and you're very good at responding to those, so thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I welcome any and all input from this board and obviously the citizenry of town. Thank you.
Great. All right. Any other comments or questions on the presentation? All right, so that, we don't have a vote or anything like that on there for it, so thank you very much. Really appreciate all the work that you've done, all the hours of meetings. Andy, your leadership on the municipal building committee, really appreciated, and you've really led that and brought it along very professionally and efficiently. All right. Next, the discussion and vote to call for a debt exclusion override associated with the public safety, public works, facility replacement project for November 4th.
I think the discussion has already occurred.
The discussion's occurred, but we still have to vote, right? I'm trying to find it on my thing here.
Would you, I'll put some special town meeting wide?
Yes.
Yeah.
The board is free to take it in whatever way you'd like, so. If you'd like to review the warrant first, Dottie, it's fine.
I think this is, this is fine. I think the important thing to talk about on this for calling for the debt exclusion election, so we're, we're calling for the override election, which is scheduled to be Saturday, November 4th, 2023, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the townwide polling location, which is Oliver Ames High School Gymnasium on Lothrup Street. So it's a six-hour window, which mirrors the recent town elections. And we have the no-excuse vote by mail, which is available for all voters in the weeks ahead of the election date if somebody is not going to be able to make it that day. of the election date if somebody is not going to be able to make it that day. That gives many options for people to ensure that people can weigh in on that vote. Town meeting will also vote, and like Connor said, we need a yes for both of those. So any comment or question on that?
No.
No.
Would somebody like to make a motion to call for the debt exclusion override on November 4th from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.?
I'll move, pardon.
Second, Lam.
Bajer and Lam, all in favor? Unanimous.
So we'll coordinate with Counsel, and we'll be back at your next meeting on the 26th with final ballot language to be adopted. Town Clerk Danielle Sicard will join as well to talk about folks' ability to request mail ballots in advance and get those sent to them in advance if that in-person date does not work with them.
Okay. And next, we have the review of the October 23rd, 2023 draft special town meeting warrant for Public Safety, Public Works Facility Replacement Project. Article 1 is the appropriation of funds for the Easton Public Safety and Public Works Facilities Replacement Project and authorization of lease of property. And Article 2, authorize the home rule petition for senior property tax exemption program.
Sure, thank you, Dottie. So Article 1 is about the project that we just spent a good amount of time on, and we've talked about a lot the past couple of years. This would be the appropriation of funds for the replacement of all police, fire, and public works facilities in Easton, and also an authorization of the lease of property for up to 75 years at Stonehill College for that fire substation. This would be contingent, even if it was adopted by town meeting on the 23rd, on the debt exclusion successfully passing. So if it passed at town meeting, the voters ultimately decided that they did not want to advance the project, the appropriation would be moved. So we've reviewed this with Counsel. We need to update the address for Daley's Corner. It should be an odd number. You don't technically get an address assigned until after you do site plan approval, which you don't do until you're in detailed design. So that's a typo, but it's non-substantive. So happy to take any further questions about the project, but if not, I would ask the board for a motion to include and recommend Article 1.
Any comments, questions?
I'll make a motion to approve and recommend Article 1.
Include.
Include, I'm sorry. Include.
So that's Lam and Bajer, all in favor? Unanimous. And same per Article 2?
Sure. So Article 2, as I had mentioned, we try not to reinvent the wheel when we don't have to. In some other communities, we've had some pretty creative ideas with trying to find ways to have tax relief, particularly for older residents on fixed incomes. And so inspired by that, working with the Finance Department, with the assessors, and also collaborating with Senator Timmeltie's office, we have included draft language here. So on this, I would ask just for an inclusion tonight and a recommendation on your next meeting when we finalize that, both with our partners in the Senator's office as well as with bond counsel. But this would be a home rule petition to the state that would establish a means-tested senior citizen property tax exemption. So there is already in state law what's called the senior circuit breaker. It's a tax break for your state taxes for exactly the kind of folks that we are concerned about when we do a project like this, which is folks who are maybe empty nesters on a fixed income. You know, part of the housing challenges we have is that people who want to stay in the community that they raised a family in and they still live in, they can't always downsize because there's just not enough stock available to do that. So sometimes folks end up, by choice and other times not by choice, in a home that has a really high value because it's in a community that is a great place, but their income does not rise with that property value increase every year, and so taxes become a real burden. And so the senior circuit breaker tax credit is targeted at those folks so that they get a break on their state tax based on having, you know, that kind of high asset but lower income mix that can be really hard. And so what this would do, this article that was adopted by voters, would authorize the Select Board to submit a home rule petition to the General Court of the Commonwealth to enact a special law establishing a three-year means-tested tax relief program for qualifying Easton seniors on fixed incomes. The intention of this article would be to lessen the impact of the incremental tax increase associated with the passage of the Public Safety, Public Works Project from multiple years as it is borrowed in those first few years when it really ramps up for folks on fixed incomes. Due to be anticipated bonding schedule of the project, bringing costs online, most noticeably in what we expect to be fiscal '26, '07, and '08, we would coordinate with Senator Timmeltie's office and our delegation to achieve, to target roughly that three-year window so that hopefully we could adopt some relief for seniors on fixed incomes as the project comes online until about 2029.
Comments, questions?
No.
Will I move to include Article 2?
Second, Lam.
Bajer and Lam, all in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Have we reached the end of the agenda?
We have.
In a roundabout way. Yeah.
Okay, so we already did the minutes. Town Administrator notes?
I just want to thank Chief Alexander, Chief Boone for holding a nice ceremony today reflecting on the anniversary of September 11th, heading into, you know, well past two decades, but it was a dignified event. And I appreciate first responders continuing to honor that year after year and for the board coming up. So thank you to those departments.
Great, thank you. Senator Timmeltie, you're, I think, our only public guest tonight. Would you like to come up and come to the microphone and share anything?
Thank you. You'll be with us, Senator?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you for joining us tonight.
Oh, it's a privilege to be here. Thank you very much. Ms. Stacy, Mr. Lam, thank you very much. Mr. Bajer, obviously our Town Administrator. Congratulations to our Assistant Town Administrator. Thank you very much. And my apologies to our outstanding VPW Director. I did not see you, Director, when you were sandwiched in between our Fire Chiefs and Police Chiefs. So thank you very much. But it's an honor to be here, and thank you for the time to talk about this bill. I was talking earlier today at the 9/11 ceremony, which I thought was just first-class. So again, compliments to our board and to our chiefs for running a first-class commemoration, commemoration of 3,000 innocent citizens who were tragically being involved, a wonderful tribute to our police and fire. Quickly, I'll just touch a little bit more formally on Senate Bill 1599, which I'll, as I mentioned earlier, and thank you for the opportunity, Madam Chair. We'll be conducting a hearing in the Joint Committee on Public Safety, and thank you again. I know Mr. Reed's been participating remotely or in person, so thank you. And of course, any member of the board would like to participate. I would be certain to expedite your appearance. Senate Bill 1599 will be funded through a portion of the state sales tax, much like the school building authority, which has been the key to success for the school building authority, has been the dedicated revenue stream. This will also dedicate a portion of each dollar of our sales tax to help fund it. It will be modeled exactly in the school building authority with engineers and architects. There will be a process, and there will be a criteria. It will also be an economic development boost, definitely, for the Commonwealth, much as the SBA has been as well, by creating ready-made construction projects for infrastructure in our cities and towns. Failing to invest in infrastructure as indicated by the American Society of Civil Engineers will end up costing us billions because eventually, our public safety infrastructure, our police and fire stations, will have to be rebuilt. We're all facing that in each and every community around the Commonwealth. And, you know, back in 2021, a former auditor, a resident of the town we're all very proud of, Suzanne Buck, came out with a report and pushed for this very building authority. And we miss the auditor as an ally on Beacon Hill. I can assure you, but I know she's doing great works here in the town. The proposed agency under Senate Bill 1599 will not only fund new construction, but also support repairs and renovation. So it won't be just brand-new schools. It'll also be, depending on what the community comes up with a proposal in their wisdom and puts forth as a proposal, could very well be renovations or repairs. But that too will be under consideration by Public Safety Building Authority. The Public Safety Building Authority will also, in hand, incorporate the use of clean energy sources and promote uniform green building standards. I think our elementary school, a brand-new elementary school here in town, is a model for that. Also, the cost savings. The bill provides a dedicated source of funding, as I mentioned earlier. It will streamline the planning and financing process for municipalities. Timing payments through the PSBA could save municipalities millions in avoiding local interest costs. And I know this board is extremely vigilant when it comes to expenditures, so I think it's something that will resonate with this board, and I know it will resonate across the Commonwealth because, obviously, all is a scarce thing space. The PSBA, and that is the initials that I've chosen for it as well. It's kind of nice when you press a file to bill, you can choose what the initials are going to be. So the PSBA will not only fund new construction, but also provide substantial repairs, as I mentioned. It will also provide expertise, as I mentioned a moment ago, with engineers and construction experts who will work with the town. Not every process will be approved, just like it is with the SBA. It's a competitive process because the tax pay and dollars are at stake. So, and finally, well-maintained public safety buildings are essential for the safety of residents and businesses. We all know that we have outstanding police and fire here in this town, and my compliments to this board and to you, Town Administrator Reed, before your department heads here in this town. Whether it be our VPW Director or our Police and Fire Chief, you have excellent departments, and public safety is first rate because of the personnel that you all have chosen as the according authorities. Our public safety first responders are desperately in need throughout the Commonwealth of these upgrading infrastructure. Firehouses that were built 100 years ago in many cases, or 60 years or 70 years ago, just after World War II, for instance, we're not considering occupational cancer for our firefighters, nor were they considering what we need for modern-day policing that the Easton Police Department does so well in terms of being able to accommodate visitors, being able to accommodate prisoners, and obviously keeping their own staff safe, for instance, at Easton Police or in Easton Fire as examples. So this bill is desperately needed around the Commonwealth. It's something I've been working on, as we've talked about, Mr. Reed, for years. I believe the time has come. And as I mentioned earlier, the Chair of Public Safety and Homeland Security, so my committee will be conducting a hearing on Wednesday at noon time, as I mentioned earlier. And we put it up in favorable in the last session with my recommendation. My House Co-Chair, the committee voted out, we made it. It did not make it through Senate Ways and Means. I'm optimistic this year. We do have momentum because it is an idea at a time that is long overdue. There are some firehouses in the district that I represent and am proud to represent, Norfolk, Pluth, and Bristol, that actually accommodated horse-drawn apparates at one time. And we have many agent police stations throughout the Commonwealth that modern-day policing just does not gel with the infrastructure we have for our police department. So it's very important. I thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, for this opportunity to talk with you and have a discussion. Obviously, I'll never forget that I worked for this town. And in terms of the home rule petition, Mr. Reed, thank you very much for being so proactive. And I know that's done in concert with the board here. It's a great thing when we talk about home rule petitions, that we can work on them ahead of time. And that with Senate Legal Counsel, which is outstanding. I look forward to working with Rep. Cassidy and, of course, our outstanding representative from Congress. I think we'll be terrific. We have a great delegation that I'm very proud, very proud of Rep. Darby, Rep. Cassidy, and myself, to work for this town and look forward to working on that home rule petition as well and secure our expeditious passage. So I'm very excited to obviously continue working with each and every one of you and working for this town. And again, my compliments on the magnificent commemoration today of 9/11. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Well, thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule. We know you represent a lot of communities, and to be able to pop in here tonight to share that with us and for your due diligence on that for the number of years that you have been supporting it, championing it. I know you've got a lot of support from others in the legislature that have also tried to move these concepts forward over the years. So fingers crossed, this is the year that we get it across the finish line.
We're generating a lot of momentum, Madam Chair. And I know you always have your pulse of what is happening on Beacon Hill. You're right on the money. We're generating a lot of support. The Fire Chiefs Association of Massachusetts weighed in in the last session, and they weighed in again in favor of the bill, as well as the professional firefighters of Massachusetts. And I've been working with Mass Coalition Police as well, and look forward to adding more entities and more citizens to the mix in terms of pushing this across the globe.
Great. Well, thank you so much for being here tonight, and you and your office are doing a great job for supporting us. Thank you for being here tonight, Kathy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, each and every member.
Thank you, Senator.
Last thing we have, Select Board notes. Do you want to have any comments or things to add? Craig?
No, I just wanted to thank Connor and Walter and Greg and Justin for being at the temple last night for a two-hour presentation. Similar to what Connor just said, it was very well received. I think we had some very good questions.
Terrific.
Yeah, I'd like to just thank everybody who's put all the work in thus far to get to this point because we're at a massive point, a turning point, where things are either going to go in one direction or another. That's coming up very quickly. So thank you all who has put all the work in thus far. And as far as the 9/11 ceremony, thank you, Chief Alexander, for putting that on. I learned today that not every community does that every single year, so I thank you for continuing that, and I hope that Easton never stops that. And then thank you, Senator Timmeltie, for being here tonight and for your passion for this bill and your unwillingness to give up. You know, I know you've gone to bat, and you keep going to bat, and I do have a feeling it'll move forward. If it doesn't, which it will, I have faith that you'll continue. Thank you. That's it.
I couldn't say anything better than what you just said, literally. But I echo everything Marc just said. There's, we're seeing a lot of strong leadership within the community, and thank you all for the contributions to helping everyone understand this project. It's a really important project. Thank you, Senators Timmeltie, for your leadership on this related issue with the PSBA, which I'm fully optimistic and hopeful that it passes through the time. So thank you. And also, I bet on today was beautiful, and it's just a really important time to have those few minutes to reflect and kind of, you know, look back on something that we should not forget and have to, you know, constantly, like you said earlier, be stewards of this experience for future generations. Thank you.
I guess the only thing that I'll add, in agreement with everything everyone's said, but I really want to thank people from the public for asking questions, whether it's on social media, in coffee shops, calling us or texting us directly. We really, we want that. We want people, even if people don't think this is a great idea, we want to know why. We want to answer the questions that people have before we get to a vote, and we really do want the public input. It's a little disappointing that there's not more of it, so we're hoping that the postcards really stimulate some conversations. This is, you know, these projects that we're doing, they're going to be transformational for our community for years to come. I don't want to be the board that kicked this can down the road again. It's our fiscal responsibility to make sure that we're taking care of this town in a financial, you know, environmentally, fiscally, and I feel like this project is the right project for us, and the time is now. So with that, if no more comments, we'll take a motion to adjourn?
I'll move, Bajer.
Second, Lam.
Bajer and Lam, all in favor? Unanimous. Great. Thanks, everybody, for being here tonight, and thanks, E-CAP, for recording.